Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your flash briefing for the week of February 3rd. City Council meet for regular session Tuesday nights, 6:00 in council chambers and City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watched live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Day Brief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Heads up drivers, southwest Second Street between southwest Noel and southwest Market Streets will close on February 3rd for one week to repair failing sanitary sewer manholes. Find the detour route at cityofls.net. But good news, the intersection of Green and Third Streets is now open. Lee Summit Arts and Culture wants you to sign up for the next Discovery Series on February 7th at 6:30 at Bridge Space. Join visual artist Mona Cliff as she lectures on the evolution of Native American beadwork and its role in preserving culture. Finally, to register, on the city's website. And stay safe and informed with LS Aware. The city's free alert system designed to keep residents and businesses informed of emergencies such as weather events, road closures, and certain non-emergency events. The city can quickly send messages via phone, text, or email depending on the preferences set up by the user. Users choose how to be notified and what information they wish to receive. Sign up at lsaware.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
It's Mayor Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of us are getting questions. I know I've gotten a few questions about the plans, so I didn't know if, just for the public knowledge. I'm not a politician. I feel like I'm just an average person in Lee Summit. They have a football field set up inside these cones or their football fields. Our two-car garage is gonna, we're gonna bring the driveway back through here and it's gonna go right here. And then... So my family has chickens. When we first got chickens, my husband said, "Don't treat them as your pets. Treat them as chickens because we're going to end up, we're gonna be eating the eggs and I would like to use them for meat." So don't treat them as your pets. Well, we now have six chickens that I consider my pets and I will not let him kill for meat. So we live downtown and we love living downtown. These are my children. The first one's Lincoln and Amira and Sophia and Caleb. This is a great neighborhood. Downtown is one big community and all of the kids get together and they play basketball and we like to walk to the farmer's market. You're holding him. It's an easy walk, probably less than 10 minutes. The farmer's market has always been a very important part of my life and my family's life. As a matter of fact, when my daughter started kindergarten, I dropped her off and I was going shopping at the farmer's market right behind Lee Summit Elementary. And I was teary-eyed because she was my first and she was going off to kindergarten. And Terry, the butterfly lady, the one that's in the purple shirt and she used to make little butterfly stickers for everyone. She gave me a big hug and was just so empathetic to the fact that my daughter had just started school.
How are you doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Doing very good.
A lot of the farmers there, my kids have, they've watched my kids grow up. I love Lee Summit in general. I love that it still has a small-town feel while embracing growth and the arts and diversity. And I feel like downtown specifically embodies that. My kids go to Lee Summit Elementary and a lot of their teachers live downtown and a lot of the business owners from downtown live downtown. So when we're out walking downtown, we see so many people we know. I lived in Africa until I was five and then we moved to the United States and I've lived in Lee Summit since. Oh, a lot of my childhood, my mom was a single mom and I feel like I was essentially raised by my community and being on council and it's just such an important way to give back to the community that raised me.
I'm Mia Pryor. Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I present this cull summation...
The day of April 2022.
The election process was fun. I got to go door-to-door and talk to people, which is my absolute favorite thing to do, is talking to people and learning about people. I even had people inviting me into their house for dinner or inviting me back to their house to meet their spouse. And I actually, I knocked on a door and the lady that answered the door was my kindergarten teacher. So it was a lot of fun. Is it on? Hi, everyone. I'm Councilmember Mia Pryor. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I have one on. Can you not? Okay. Maybe I'll watch. I love being a council rep for District 1. I know everyone says this, but District 1 is by far, in my opinion, the best district. Rain Tree Lake, that's part of District 1. I love that community. Actually, my husband and I got married at the clubhouse in Rain Tree Lake. I really love all of South Lee Summit. I love the growth that they're going to be experiencing soon and that they've already experienced. I wanted to say that if you guys have a concern, please, please come tell us what your concern is because we can only, we can only address and help with what we know. We're there to kind of bridge that gap, bridge that gap between constituents in the city and we're the voice of our constituents. And we can go to the city and voice what their concerns are, what their ideas are. So if you have a concern, definitely make us aware. So my big priorities are public safety. That's always one of my top priorities. I've always wanted to make sure that first responders were supported. I think that that's super important to me and to many in our city. But also, I, I wanted to influence the growth in Lee Summit. I wanted to influence the type of businesses we get here and the type of activities there are to do for our families. If we're gonna continue to grow downtown, how important it is to focus on people that already live here and the infrastructure we already have in place.
Our first presentation tonight is gonna be Assistant City Manager Ryan Elam, who's going to talk about that very exciting farmer's market plaza.
But I want to show you the most recent rendering, fly-through video of that. That's really the best way to kind of get a good sense of what this will look like in the near future.
To see it developing into something as big as it's going to be across from City Hall is super exciting to me. I can't wait for it to get built and to start welcoming people into what the farmer's market's gonna be, but also everything else that goes along with that development. You wanna hold it? Drop it.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Have a good one.
I'm just an average person in Lee Summit that wanted to be a voice of many that, that sometimes feel like they don't have a voice. Yeah, I'm not a politician. I'm just a mom that cares.
Please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to serve this community. We thank you for the blessing of this gathering where we can work together in unity for the common good of all. We ask for your wisdom to guide our thoughts, our decisions, and our actions as we deliberate on matters before us. Grant us discernment, compassion, and a spirit of cooperation that we may lead with integrity, fairness, and respect for one another. Bless our leaders with strength and courage and help us to seek peace, justice, and the well-being of all who call this city home. We entrust this meeting to your care, knowing that with your guidance we can build a community that reflects your love and grace. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Right. Again, welcome, everyone. I'm gonna call to order the regular session for the city of Lee Summit. This would be session number 27 as amended. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pryor?
Here.
Councilmember Rader?
President.
Councilmember Shields?
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle? Councilmember Lovell?
Here.
Councilmember Hodges?
Here.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. Before we begin tonight, I need to do some agenda management. I need to move item 8C. It's bill number 25-035. It was actually not approved at the committee last night, so we're gonna move it to first readings. So it's not, we're just simply moving it from first readings forwarded from committee to first readings. So also, we're gonna move the proclamation that we had on the agenda tonight to February 25th instead of tonight. So we'll do that on the 25th. With that, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? I have a motion from Councilmember Hodges and a second from Councilmember Pryor. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All, no, I'm missing one. Nope, we got them all. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? I have a motion from Councilmember Shields and a second from Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That is also adopted unanimously. Thank you all. And that takes us right into council roundtable, items of general interest, things going on in the community. Councilmember Shields?
Go, Chiefs.
I, just, by her saying that, just a whole explosion of thoughts went into my mind that are totally not related to this meeting. So you now have me off my game for the rest of the meeting, so just so you know. All right. Anything else from anybody? All right, then we're gonna go into public hearings right away. We're gonna do some business. We're gonna close the regular session and go and open a public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 5A. This is a special use permit for Adams Toyota Auto Repair and Maintenance Facility. Adams Toyota Lee Summit is the applicant. With all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Scott Middleton. I'm the general manager at Adams Toyota. I'll try to be quick and succinct. I know you have a full agenda tonight. Adams Toyota Collision Center has been located at 2401 Northeast Douglas Road, right next to the airport for 12 years. Zoning of the property will remain the same with no changes to the character of the neighborhood. The building is constructed of precast concrete walls, which provides excellent noise barrier to the surrounding neighborhood. There has not and will not be any negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood property values. In its continued use as a collision center, we pledge to be environmentally safe. We will continue to use only water-based paints. With proper ventilation and filtration, paint waste will be removed by GFL Environmental Waste Management. We are OSHA compliant and will continue to align with OSHA standards. We employ on average of 15 to 20 employees at our collision center. We take great pride in being the only certified Toyota Collision Center in the Kansas City metro. This certification was granted by Toyota after meeting stringent property building, equipment, and training standards. We continue to be graded on these. standards. We continue to be graded on these standards in order to remain certified and have continually continual property and employee training assessments. Since moving our collision center from Raytown, Missouri in two thousand twelve, Adams Toyota has served the Lee's Summit community in providing quality vehicle repairs to over thirteen thousand customers at our collision center alone. We service all vehicles, makes, and models, and our convenient location allows us to service the residents of Lee's Summit without having to travel outside the city for vehicle repairs. The sales revenue generated from these repairs has resulted in a significant tax revenue for the City of Lee's Summit. We are, Adams Toyota Collision Center has benefited its surrounding residents through bringing natural gas and cable fiber to Northeast Douglas Street. This is beneficial because our current residents, along with the church and the airport, no longer are restricted to use propane for their heating needs, and fiber allows for faster connection speeds and data travel, and often with a lesser cost than cable. I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
All right. We'll go ahead and do staff's presentation, and then we'll come back. Thank you.
Good evening. Adair Bright, Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits one through twenty-one.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, one through twenty-one.
The purpose of the application is to renew a special use permit to allow for the continued operation of a major automotive repair facility on the property addressed at twenty-four oh one Northeast Douglas Street. The subject site is currently the home of Adams Toyota Auto Repair and Maintenance Facility, and the business has occupied the space since two thousand twelve with SUP approval. The subject property is zoned PI or planned industrial. Properties both to the north and south are also zoned PI and include an auto detailing shop to the north and a worship facility to the south. The property to the east is zoned AZ and includes the Lee's Summit Municipal Airport. Single-family homes are located west across Northeast Douglas Street and are zoned a mixture of Ag and R1. The site contains one building with one story and is about sixteen thousand square feet. The building was built in nineteen ninety-eight and is made of precast concrete. The overhead doors are located on the rear or the east side of the building. There are twenty parking stalls outside plus twelve parking stalls or service bays inside the building. The UDO requires three parking stalls per service bay and allows for the service bay to also count as a stall itself. The business has operated in the subject location for thirteen years. A neighborhood meeting was held on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four as part of the overall project, where seven members of the public attended. Some of the questions included any proposed expansion, potential and occasional smells, the amount of employees, and why the cars were parked within the building. One comment was received in favor of the project, and one written comment was received regarding concerns about occasional odors, and those concerns were also stated verbally to the Planning Commission on October twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-four. Staff has worked with both the resident and the applicant to address these concerns and mitigate any issues. The applicant has stated the filters will be changed more frequently, and the resident has been provided with contact information for a business representative in case the odor occurs, and a condition of approval has been added regarding odors or fumes, which is condition number four. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan promotes various strategies to build long-term economic prosperity and resiliency in the city's economy. One objective established in the Comprehensive Plan is to stimulate continued economic development, investment, and reinvestment by the private sector. Approval of the subject SUP application to allow major automotive repair on the subject property supports continued economic viability of the site by broadening the range of allowed uses offered to the public to meet the community's needs. With the conditions of approval outlined here, including number four, to address the concern brought up by a nearby resident, and in the staff letter, the application meets the goals of the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and the requirements of the UDO, and staff recommends approval. And I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right. Very good. Questions for applicant or staff? All right. Thank you. Next, I'm going to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application. Please come forward. Any additional questions from council? Hearing no further testimony. I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I had a constituent reach out to me about the odor, but it sounds like that you guys have done a really good job to try to mitigate any odor in the future. And I was kind of surprised when you said you used water-based paint. So does that help with the odor, having that different kind of paint? I mean, I guess you don't have to really answer that question, but, but it's no big deal. But I just was glad to hear that there was something that was done in, in favor of getting, making sure that there wasn't odor.
Yeah, and the meeting, I don't know when it was, the first meeting we had, Planning Commission meeting, we had talked to them before that, and then at the meeting, and they have my phone number, the dealership's phone number, the body shop's phone number, and said if there's ever a problem, just give us a call, and we'll make it right.
I appreciate that, and I know they will too.
And I made sure I double-checked this morning, knowing this meeting was coming up, and asked my Collision Center manager if he had any contact with any of the residents, and he said, no, not since the last meeting.
Great. I think it's a great project, a great building, and glad you're here. Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. Thank you. Very good. Hearing no further questions or comments. Councilmember Rader, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-three-one?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading bill number twenty-five zero-three-one in ordinance granting a special use permit renewal for major automotive repair services district PI planned industrial on land located at twenty-four oh one Northeast Douglas Street for a period of ten years from the previous expiration date, all in accordance with Article Six of the Unified Development Ordinance for the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. I have motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-three-one by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It is pushed, excuse me, motion, it is advanced to second reading unanimously, so it'll go to second reading, and thanks for continuing to invest in Lee's Summit. All right. Next, public hearing. We're going to close the regular session again. We're going to open the public hearing in the matter of applicant, excuse me, agenda item five B. This is a rezoning from RP three to CP two to RP four and PMIX, Preliminary Development Plan and Conceptual Development Plan, Ovation, three-twenty-five Southeast, one fifty highway, Engineering Solutions LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. All right, Mr. Slish, how are you?
Good. Good evening. Matt Slish, Injuring Solutions, fifty southeast thirtieth street, Lee's Summit, Missouri. With me this evening is the, the Ward Development Team. Should we have any questions that I can't answer for you on that side? To just give a little background on the Ward Development, they're a multi-generational company that's been in town for fifty years, developing in Lee's Summit, surrounding areas, and across the United States, developing residential for rent-for-sale, as well as industrial stuff that they've currently done inside Lee's Summit. This is kind of a listing of some current options that are available for them. So Windsor Estates, which is a larger estate-type development out by Legacy, and then a number of Grain Valley, Oak Grove, Blue Springs types of development that they've built in. Again, just kind of talking through their growth and what they've done, this is kind of a current list of things that they've done in the recent history of, of homes. So largest home builders by permits in two thousand twenty-two, second in two thousand twenty-three, a large quality builder that builds residential and industrial and commercial in multi, multiple areas of town. To go back then, where they've been in Lee's Summit, some of the areas you might know are kind of in the north side of Lee's Summit. So up by Colburn Road, Amber Hills, Deerbrook, Oak Tree Farms, so down by Langsford in that area, almost six hundred and some lots. They were single-family developed in the last thirty years. More recently, some of the industrial stuff that's been being done out by the airport, one that's currently being done right now, out off of McGuire up at Lakewood Industrial, the Town Center project that we're very proud of that just got completed and is starting to fill up, and then a number of the industrial projects kind of around that McBane area. So a developer that's been in town, has been working through the community and throughout the areas for, for quite some time. So they came to us looking at a site down in the southeast kind of quadrant of Lee's Summit, so one fifty and two ninety-one. Northwest quadrant is kind of the commercial corridor where Walmart has developed. Ace Hardware just went in there. Quick Trip is down in there. Our Water Burger just showed up. Southwest side is another development where we have Price Chopper, a number of commercial businesses, a couple new fast food restaurants down in that area as well. The northeast side is an area where you guys have seen lots of changes and options and things that people have been talking about behind that Sonic area. I think just last week, the TriStar community brought that montage back in. So it's continuing to develop that Shamrock Business Park area. To the north and east is Kobe Creek, which is something that has developed and then came back in within the last year to kind of modify their plan and kind of regroup to what is needed in the community. To the west side is Summit Creek, a multi-family townhome project that we brought forward a few years ago that is still waiting on financing as these interest rates have kind of flown up, but hopefully sooner than later will be coming along. Everything to the east is primarily Greenwood as we head down one fifty highway, but as you start to see, it's a large mixture of uses down in that area. There's a lot of commercial, there's a lot of residential. Growth is occurring, and that's kind of where we're hoping to continue. The site, as we looked at it, is eighty acres. It currently has the south forty acres that is zoned single-family R1 today. There's a middle ten-acre sliver that is currently zoned R3, and then the north thirty acres was zoned CP two. I believe that was done in about the eighties, and it's that process of town and our time when we were trying to figure out what this kind of corridor and community wanted to be down in this area. So as you look, this is the M one fifty overlay district. You see some stuff to the west where we have the foundation recovery systems. We have a Lamar's Donuts down there. We have a lot of undeveloped commercial ground. Greenwood has started developing some of their commercial activity. And so what we started to say is, what does the area need? What can go? And so as we started looking at the site, like I said, single-family to the south with the RP three in that area, the density could allow ten units an acre or a hundred units of townhome just in that little ten-acre sliver. And then the CP two is, is unlimited. You have seven hundred thousand probably square feet of available CP two commercial use. But our opinion, as we started looking at it, and then looking at the M one fifty overlay that started talking about mixed use, started looking at what Kobe Creek is doing, started looking at what we've seen, the many iterations of what potentially develops north of us is, that much CP two probably didn't make sense in this area. So we started trying to figure out a plan that created more towards this mixed-use idea while still trying to listen to our residents. You know, we had a number of neighborhood meetings we'll talk about in some time to try to develop this plan to where we believe it makes sense. And so then we started looking to the north of us. You know, Kobe Creek just got done. They revised and came forward now where they have a plan where they have their single-family standard that was started, some duplex. They introduced some single-family forty-foot-wide lots, some quadplexes, and left about seven and a half acres of commercial right down on one fifty highway. So as we started looking at that, we said, well, let's try to figure out what we can do to mimic some of those same development plans to keep it consistent in the area. So the Kobe Creek came in with the forty-foot-wide lots, a sixty-six hundred-foot minimum. We thought that in our single-family portion, we would stick to the standard R1, meet the seventy-foot minimums, meet the eighty-four hundred square foot minimums. Kobe Creek reduced some of the side yards, the front yards, and the rear yards in that area, and we thought the same in our, our residential area, we'd maintain what code requires. As we started looking at PMIX, we started trying to figure out if Kobe Creek has seven acres, there's some ground to the west of it that's undeveloped, that there's probably a fair amount of acres down in there. So we thought that reducing our commercially-zoned property from thirty acres down to around nine acres and converting it into a PMIX, which allows us more control, allows the city more control, to help guide what that mixed-use development wants to be, would be a better plan. We looked at Kobe Creek and tried to identify that they have about an acre and a half of amenity space with one pool and clubhouse. So we thought we would go in and increase our amenity space to about two and a half acres and create a, a pool and amenity space for each individual area as the development went on. So what we're proposing is a PMIX on the north end that we'd like to do conceptually at this time. We don't think at this time that that PMIX area is well-defined enough with the multiple options that we've seen to the north, the multiple options of what could happen to the west. We think that that's better suited to come back at a later date. So we're asking to rezone the north nine acres to PMIX. We're asking to rezone the R3 and the commercial area to R4, not necessarily for a density increase, but because of the setbacks and the changes in zoning, the RP three makes it a little difficult to develop the quality townhome product and still meet what the intent, I think, of the area wants to be. So as we start to look all that, what we're trying to say is, in the RP four area, the allowed by zoning right would be about three-hundred-and-thirty-six units in this kind of orangey area, beige area, and what we're proposing is a hundred-and-ninety-two units. And so then we go and look at the PMIX and the conceptual area up in there, about nine acres. Our single-family down in the south end, we're thinking we keep to R1 standards, which puts us at a unit density of about two-point-six. All of this to say, as we looked at Kobe Creek, their overall density is about four units an acre. As we look at Summit Creek, their density was about four-point-three. This proposed development as a whole will have an overall density of about four-point-five. So we thought that we've created a comparable community within the area that still is in line with the other developments that are proposing. So this development plan, I call this the updated development plan because it has changed from three neighborhood meetings. It's changed after our planning commission meeting. They asked us to go back and look at some things, and we've created this updated plan that we think is a great fit that Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of. And what the idea is, is forty-eight quad or townhome units kind of in this red area. Again, the PMIX blue area on the top, conceptually, we're showing some mixed-use apartments with some commercial, standalone commercial. This plan will come back before this body, if this is approved, at a later date when that PMIX plan can better understand what the other areas are doing. You know, so our plan is, with this nine acres, it's hard to understand with Kobe Creek having seven-plus acres, the development to the north proposing stuff, and then to the west, there's a lot of flexibility down there that this seems to be a later-type project. So the plan then is to create, as the Planning Commission asked and requested, was the off-street parking spaces. So there are three locations of created off-street parking or on-street parking that create an opportunity for residents to have extra parking. The pool community space has an off-street parking area that will allow and create overall parking in this area over three units or three spaces per unit. The amenity spaces that are, again, each zone, so a single-family will have one, and then the quads will have one. They've created spaces for a playground. They've added spaces for a sports court. They've added spaces for each area to have its own pool, its own clubhouse, its own area to kind of create its own zone throughout the development. And so this is what we kind of had a conversation with a planning commission. We got sent back to the drawing board and kind of came up with a better plan that we believe is theirs. Originally, we went and presented to them, all of our townhomes had single-car garages. At their request, we went back, and we've now created a mixture that half of the units are single-car garages and half of the units are two-car garages. They asked and requested that we create some additional off-street parking. So those are those little parking bays that we just talked about a second ago. The other one is, we had a neighbor to the east that has acreage property with a pond sitting back in here. So we relocated the pool that was sitting down over in here and created a green space with a fence on the easterly side of it to try to prevent anybody from wanting to create access to his property or his pond, to try to create a separation. And so those are just some of the things the developer has done since the beginning of this project is to try to get it to a plan that makes sense for everybody. And so as we start to talk about it again, the single-family area sits on the southerly end with its own clubhouse and pool amenity. The center area then is all the townhomes, again, with their own amenity spaces, and then whatever this mixed-use on the north end will come up will have its own amenity space to create an environment for their residents individually. So as we start to look at the current townhome unit, again, with a two-car, single-car split so that every building has two of each, the spaces are thirteen hundred and sixty-five square feet for the single-car units, fifteen hundred and eighty-five square feet for the two-car units. All of them will be three-bedroom, two and a half baths. Our expectation of rental rates are somewhere in the fifteen hundred to twenty-one hundred dollars a month. All of them done with four-sided architecture, creating a different material, color, and palette throughout the entire development, so it doesn't maintain a consistent look, but to create some opportunity and eye-catching looks as you drive through. On the proposed PMIX area, we've just represented what an opportunity might be up in there, whether this be some commercial uses on the lower level or what this might be, but just a standard apartment building is kind of what we're seeing. seeing up at the north end. It would be a mixed-use. But again, this plan will come back before you at a later date, whenever that is kind of determined on that side. For an expectation of what we're seeing down in the single-family area, it's a mixture of all sorts of uses, the ranches, the two-stores, the reverses, and the splits. We believe the single-family will make a change as it comes from the south end to the north end. As we come from Belmont Farms, which is a great development, 14,000-square-foot lots, many homes that are pushing in the $800,000, $900,000 range, where we think that we can create a great transition from Belmont Farms through our single-family to get to the townhomes and ultimately get up to 150 Highway. One of the things that we also started to look at in the M150 overlay, your thoroughfare master plan start to show, is this project continues an improvement in the thoroughfare or the networking of the roads throughout the system. So, Summit Creek has the initial start of this roadway that'll connect to the outer road that will terminate on our easterly boundary, hopefully envelop at some point, the easterly properties, if they ever develop, would continue that road over to Doc Henry to provide another access point, if you've ever been on Doc Henry, which would be greatly nice, nice to have over there. On the south end at Belmont Farms, Soral is a developed road that was sitting there stubbed and waiting to be extended out for quite some time, and so, the development will continue and develop a road that'll go up to the north. This intersection at 150 Highway will be a signalized intersection that was part of the Kobe Creek development requirements. It'll create a signal at 150 Highway, essentially a quarter-mile east of the current outer road signal. This development also had an opportunity to assist in the overall community. So, the area down in there has a sanitary sewer system, unlike some of this in the area that are over-capacity. Water Utilities came to us and said that this site has been evaluated and identified that it would be the perfect spot and to create an excess-flow-holding basin that would help to improve the sanitary sewer system for the overall 500-plus-acre watershed that is in the southeast side of town. So, when we brought in Summit Creek, the conversations, we're talking about updating or increasing the sizes of few segments of sanitary sewer line. This excess-flow-holding basin will remove the needs of any other improvements on that lower downstream portion of the sanitary sewer system and create the opportunity for development for that entire watershed area. As we started talking through, at the Planning Commission meeting with some of the residents, the excess-flow-holding basin became something that was quite of a concern. We tried to explain the differences of an excess-flow-holding basin is essentially handling the surge of rainwater that is infiltrating into your sanitary sewer system during rain events. So, an excess-flow-holding basin doesn't hold raw sewage like a treatment pond would. It holds primarily the stormwater that infiltrates into that basin or into the pipe system. And so, then inside the city, this map is from the city of Lee's Summit's wastewater maps. It illustrates essentially the 10 excess-flow-holding basins that are currently and already in use in the city. And as you start to see up on the north end of town, so this is Fritchie's Bluff, looking down through the creek, and you can see the residential development developing all the way around it. This is down off of Ward Road, so this is Villas at Park Wood down there on the south side of town. So, it's something that consistently the city has utilized and many other cities utilize to handle that surge of rainwater that infiltrates into the sanitary sewer system and makes the system become unusable for development while we have an opportunity to create one on-site that will help to develop and allow the development of that watershed. So, in the traffic improvements was another conversation that we've had. The city traffic engineer and MoDOT have both reviewed our traffic plans. Everybody believes that the site will not create a unnecessary burden on the area. There are some improvements on 150 Highway with, if you've ever been down to this eastbound road, just east of Sonic or south of Sonic, the road kind of terminates the two-lane just automatically. So, we're going to create a transition that takes the two-lane into, or the two lanes eastbound into the single-lane eastbound at the transition point of our northwest corner. The signal would be the red dot. The yellow dot on the west side is the current signal that exists. This dot is Doc Henry. So, what we tried to illustrate on some of these tables and information, we can get into as more as you need, is just the understanding that if you're sitting at example of 150 Highway in this outer road, the existing eastbound traffic in the morning has a backup or a delay of 104 feet of stacking. Once the development is in, that increases to 114 feet. Then again, on the eastbound in the PM, it's 451 to 588 feet. So, again, it's manageable numbers that create a level of service that is acceptable for the city, that when this system gets involved or installed, it will not create an impact to the 150 Highway corridor system that will be detrimental. And so, one of the things that the neighbors had talked about was just the impact that they currently see and the backup that happens during peak times in the morning and night. And so, we've evaluated the locations. The additional one is Doc Henry, which is another one of those that's the oddity, as it is the easterly boundary of the city. So, it is split between Greenwood and the city of Lee's Summit. They do experience delays there. Our hope and opinion is that with the continuation of Soral out of Belmont Farms, it will give them an opportunity of a secondary route to get out through into a signalized intersection that will keep them off of Doc Henry that currently has and experiences delays. Just the landscape plan, so you're starting to see and understand just the amount of landscaping and improvements that'll be done up there, especially on the RP4 area, just because it's a townhome community next to single-family agricultural. All of the existing trees along the easterly and westerly boundaries will be maintained and additional landscaping will be included to try to create a buffer. We've had a number of meetings with both of the residents on the east and west side, and that seemed to be satisfactory to them for a buffer. So, as we said, this has been a number of meetings getting to this point, and we had great turnout throughout the entire time. We had three neighborhood meetings, and I think we generated 40 to 50 people at almost all of them. So, it's a number that we had. And I think that each time, we tried to listen and tried to make changes. So, what we started with and what we began with, I think we've come a long ways. I think the neighbors have worked hard to get their opinions and points heard, and so I hope that they would state to you that we've done a good job in trying to listen and modify our plan to create something that will work well with them. So, standard questions were, you know, the traffic, stormwater, and then the excess-flow-holding basin, and I think I've kind of talked through most of those. But, I believe we have one resident here tonight that can answer or ask any questions on that side of it, but I think it's testimony to the developer that we've gone from a spot where we've had 50-some people at these meetings, and we're down to a single person, that I think he'll tell you, we worked hard to get to this point and create something that I think will be a good development for the community. So, with that, we'll be here for questions.
All right, thank you. Yeah, let's hear from Mr. Soto, and then we'll do the questions.
Good evening. Hector Soto, Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 26.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 26.
The application before you encompasses the area here that is outlined in yellow. Mr. Schlisch, in his presentation, has referenced a total of 80 acres. The focus of this application that's before you and the action that you will take will be for the rezoning and preliminary development plan and conceptual development plan for just the northern 40 acres. And I'll kind of go through here and show you, if you need any clarification or question as to why that is, I can go through that. So, this map here shows existing zoning and surrounding zoning. So, as you can see, that northern 40 acres has been alluded to by Mr. Schlisch, has about 30 acres that's commercial, 10 acres here through the metal, like a belt, if you will, 10-acre belt that has RP3 zoning that is similar to Summit Creek development that has previously gone through this process and has received approval, previously approved for a plan and rezoning. And then you have the southern 40 acres that has existing R1 zoning. So, the reason why we're only focusing on the 40 acres before you is that the ultimate planned development of the southern 40 acres can do so under the existing R1 zoning and therefore requires no rezoning. There's no associated preliminary development plan because it is just a standard single-family residential zoning district. It is not a planned district. So, in the future, when the southern 40 acres are ultimately developed, what you'll see that'll come before you will just be a series of plats. So, that's why there's no action on that being taken. It can move forward through the development process with that existing zoning and just come through, as I stated, through the planning process. So, you know, again, the focus will just be on the northern 40 acres. So, a little bit of the history as to how this southeast quadrant of 291 and 150 have kind of grown up over the years, is that the subject property, and here I'll refer to the entire 80 acres, the entire 80 acres here that are outlined in yellow obtained its existing zoning, which has that commercial at the north end, that more higher-density residential belt in the middle, and the R1 zoning. It all got that about 52 years ago, back in 1973. It predated all of the existing subdivision that you see there. So, it predated Saddle Brook by 12 years. A lot of these homes here along Doc Henry Road that back up to the property were developed in the mid-'80s. There may be a couple newer ones, but the bulk of them were developed in the mid-'80s, kind of concurrent with the Saddle Brook development. And then you can see future phases of Saddle Brook East. In '93, it came online, and then in early 2000s, early to mid-2000s, you had the Belmont Farms subdivision come online. So, I've got a little bit of an inset map here, just to, again, reference as to where we are talking about. So, as Mr. Schlisch had also mentioned, this property, this development has gone through a number of iterations. This most recent one is reflective of comments that were made at the planning commission level to achieve some additional on-street parking, to address some concerns about just the availability of parking, some of the issues that we do see with some of our townhome development is the lack of off-street parking, just given the amount of limited space that you do have with the amount of curb cuts on those streets, sort of that development, and some of the limited number of off-street driveway spaces. So, here highlighted are the three areas that Mr. Schlisch had mentioned where, based on planning commission feedback, there were three what I'll call parking area pods that were dedicated and distributed fairly evenly throughout the development. What this did was, with this revision, it dropped the number of lots from about 52 fourplex lots to 48. So, they've lost about 16 total dwelling units to address these concerns, which the applicant was fully agreeable to do so. And as part of that, we think has come up with a little bit better distribution of common area space and the availability of those off-street parking spaces to make them a little bit more accessible to folks throughout the subdivision. Here's a close-up of those areas, but in total, there are, like I said, 54 parking spaces in these pods. Just counting the amount of available off-street spaces, so just everything in the garage and in the driveway in front of those garages, the 192 units will have a total of 576 available spaces, just in the driveways and garages alone. So, with that, plus, you know, 54 spaces, we've got over 600 available parking spaces. And that's not counting any possible on-street spaces that may be available still scattered throughout. The elevations, Mr. Schlisch had mentioned at that north, oh, well, I guess the two images on the east side of the elevations and the rendering are that conceptual look as to what, how future apartment development may look like, and the townhome units here on the left. So, one of the things that the applicant did to gain some off-street parking spaces is that earlier iterations of the townhomes had each of the single units have just one single-car garage. The image to the south of this one or to the bottom of it changed that layout so that of the four townhome units in each building, two of them will have two-car garages. You'll still have two singles, but you'll have two-two-car garages, plus the available driveways that feed into those driveway spaces. So, essentially, if you count the two garages plus two driveway spaces in front of them, you know, there'll be four parking spaces total provided for, you know, for half of the dwelling units in each of the individual buildings. As Mr. Schlisch had mentioned, there have been a total of three neighborhood meetings, and then throughout that, there's been other communication that's been held. But, a lot of the topics and concern have been just general traffic concerns, connectivity between the subdivisions to the south and the proposed development, stormwater and buffer requirements. There were, early on, under the very early iterations, there were some neighborhood protest petitions that were filed. However, those only constituted 7% of the property within 185 feet of the site. So, it was well under the 30-foot, the 30% minimum threshold to trigger a six-vote majority to gain approval at the city council level. There were four conditions of approval, fairly standard, just referring to the drawings that were presented as part of the packet that were before you, as well as mentioning certain road improvements that Mr. Schlisch had covered that also were recommended under the transportation impact analysis conducted by staff. So, with that, I will yield to any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff or applicant? Yes, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, my first question, will there be no parking on one side of the street in the townhome area?
Yes. Parking will be restricted to just one side of the street.
Okay. And then, as far as the detention pond, is there ever an odor associated with that when it's full? Or even when it's empty, just any time?
We'll have Jeff Thorne come up, and he'll be able to answer that.
Jeff Thorne, Deputy Director, Water Utilities. It is going to be holding dilute sewage, okay? It's rainwater what we see as inflow and infiltration in our lines. And let me back up just a second here. The necessity for this holding basin was determined because in working with a consultant with Little Lou Valley, they said, hey, did you know that your geographic information system is wrong? And the line that goes underneath Lake Winnebago that you show as a 30-inch line is a 15. And then, we hired somebody to go out and physically measure it, and sure enough, it is. And what that does is create a bottleneck there. So, if the area, and this serves quite a bit of area, it serves all the way up to Walmart on that side of the road, and then up north of 150 in the area around the interchange and all of that developable area, what we found is, if we put much more development into this line, it will overflow in Saddle Brook. It'll back up from under the lake, and it'll come out the manholes and the backyards in Saddle Brook. So, we had to come up with a solution for it. We looked at several options. We looked at running a new interceptor on the west side of 291. We looked at putting in a pump station and trying to pump it around the overloaded leg. Those came in at four and five times the cost of this, and they're much more complicated to do. So, then we hired a consultant. We had a study done to see if it was feasibly possible to do this. This would be what we would call the gravity-in, gravity-out solution. So, what we would be doing is be diverting flow and holding it for a short period of time as the peak of the rainfall passes through that system and then releasing it in. So, it doesn't remain full. It's used during a rainfall event. We'll back some water up in there, let the peak pass, and then release the water. So, it doesn't stay very long. That said, it is a dilute form of sewage. We have these in a lot of places. So, could it smell? It could. Generally speaking, in most of our locations, that isn't the case. We've got some that are adjacent to pump stations that we occasionally will back water up into full-string sewage to do maintenance on the pump station, that kind of stuff, and those are the ones we get concerns about.
Is that over near Prairie Lee?
Yep. Scruggs there. Scruggs Pump Station, we've had to do that. I know that, I think it was probably during Oktoberfest or maybe downtown days, one summer, we were working on a force main under Scruggs Road and had to back the, shut this pump station down to do that, and it was hot, and it was nasty, and it wasn't really nice. It was unpleasant. But, in that case, that... But in that case, that full holding basin serves a purpose for that. This is not designed to do that. This is strictly for the rain events, so.
Does a pump station completely eliminate the smell, or no? I mean, what, no?
No. Because the pump station would always have sewage going through it then, it would be a full-time thing, and it, they have their own bugaboo's and their own odor issues, so.
The likelihood of the smelling is minimal?
Minimal. Minimal, and it would, it's, use of it is weather-dependent, okay? You get last spring, we'd have used it several times. Last summer, it dried out, we wouldn't have used it at all. It really depends, so.
And if it does smell, is there anything that people that live around there can do?
Anytime we put anything in any of our flow-holding ponds, we'll go out and clean up anything that would be deteriorous to the area, anything that might not be, come out of there, we'll wash them down. If we think there's going to be any odor in it, we'll lime them. So, we do, we do not want them to stink. We don't want them to be a nuisance.
There's the possibility of, like, sewage getting left behind in this detention pond after the water drains?
It drains back, but it'll be an earthen basin, so it'll have grass in it and that.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you. And then, my other question is, okay, so, in the future, um, so it said three pools and three, it's not about the detention pond, sorry, three pools, three pickleball courts. Is there anything, so if we approve this plan as-is, is there anything, like, is that set in stone? Does that have to happen? There's, the developer can't switch it up and be like, oh, I'm not going to do the pools, I'm not going to do the pickleball courts? Like, that is in the plan, and that's what we approve, and that's what has to happen?
What I would say is that, at least the way the ordinance is written right now, there isn't any specific language mandating that those specific amenities be provided. So, if that is something that you would like to see specifically called out, or at least a class of amenities, if not a very specific, like Jungle Jim or something like that, then that's something that we would recommend that you include perhaps as an amended or an additional condition of approval.
Thank you.
The only one I'd add to that would be just on the variability of specifics on that one gets a little tricky, because like I said, pickleball, as we've all heard, is sometimes good and sometimes bad. I think some of the ones I'd like the developers still be able to, you know, some of these pieces of the pool, and we believe they'll all be there. So, maybe it's an amenity space or an area, you know, so we showed like two and a half acres of community amenity space, if that works for you or something. I just, if we could avoid a specific type, just so we have flexibility, I think would be appreciated.
Yes, and I completely understand that, and I agree. I just want to make sure that there's, I know, just given, I just want to make sure that there's no way that the plans can be changed, or it can be backed out of having the amenity space. So, I don't even, I feel like my attorney would have to do that. And then, I think that's about the only question. So, this detention pond that I'm seeing, when I'm seeing this, the yellow houses, this are the, so, none of the Belmont Farms is pictured. So, those yellow houses are part of the Ovation development, and then the Belmont Farms, so they're not going to be directly, there's going to be a row of houses between the detention pond and Belmont Farms, correct?
Yeah, and so, and so, just kind of on, and I know we're not talking about the R one, but I think it is important to talk through the ideas of it. You know, so in talking to the neighbors, we created a green space buffer around the entire perimeter to where it exists, you know, it touched existing properties. And then, we backed rows of houses up in here that will be, in our opinion, probably the bigger version of our lots, and then the detention basin is in the interior. So, the idea is to try to separate. Additionally, one of, or two of the neighborhood meetings we had, these residents here showed it because they have a ton of stormwater coming directly off of this field. And so, we're going to do some stormwater improvements down in this south end to try to aid and remove some stormwater that's directly flowing into those units down in that area. So, yeah, so we believe we've created a great buffer on that south end, and again, I think if any of the residents want to talk through that side of it, that's one thing we think we've done a great job of, of listening to and hearing to create a separation between, because again, Belmont is, it's fourteen thousand square foot lots, they're big lots down there, but it just, it's not manageable to try to continue those large lots as you consistently go up towards and transition to M-one-fifty highway, so. But we did, like I say, we have a green space buffer, existing trees will all remain, and then we tried to back up residences to them to be least impactful as possible.
And then, where's the sewage basin? It's going to be?
This guy, right here. This two-acre spot is it.
So, that will be in the backyard of some people from Belmont Farms, correct?
It is in the backyard, yes, but it gets to the point where it's, it's difficult to see, but it's the cul-de-sac, and so where you start to see, it's probably easy to see here, you see the houses, like, this is the house, and then the other house in the cul-de-sac is here. So, this is backyard, and so it's one of those deep cul-de-sac lots, and so as the selection of the location was selected, it kind of creates a spot where it's as far physically away as it could be versus like being in here where it'd be, you know, in the backyards. These are more off to the back. But yes, it's adjacent to it, the existing tree mass that is there, we believe, will all remain, landscaping will be installed, and it'll, you know, the basin actually sits up in here nearer our pool.
So, how far, so, will there be a fence around the?
Yes, I haven't seen the exact plans, and Jeff's certainly going to answer it, but the chain link fence and?
Yeah, absolutely. We fence our entire sites, and we'll, like Matt said, we're working, we're going to leave the existing tree mass there as much intact as we can. I think he's got to run a storm sewer line along the south side of our detention. And then, we're still working on some design pieces of that, but in our intention is to add some pretty vigorous landscaping out there also.
And then, if this neighborhood get, does go in, doesn't go in, is the sewage basin going in regardless, or is it dependent on?
I can't recommend that any other development goes in until that basin goes in, in that drainage area.
So, your plans are, the city's plans are to put the basin in regardless of?
We really need to do that.
Okay. And then, is the sewage basin tied to approval of this, or just because, or how does that, so?
The land it's sitting on, they were gracious enough to donate to us.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And so, yeah, kind of.
Okay. Perfect, I think, I think that's all of my questions. Well, I guess one more. There will be sidewalks through all of the red part, throughout, everywhere, right? There'll be sidewalks?
Yep, correct. So, on the single-family side, there's sidewalks on one side, all the red parts have sidewalks on both sides, and then throughout the entire corridor, the east-west and the north-south collector, there'll be sidewalks on both sides too, so you'll have walkability throughout the entire development.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of different questions for different people. Let's see, Matt, since you're up here, I'll ask you, because I want to make sure that we're only, we're only talking about the red zone.
This area.
We're not talking about R one right now.
Correct.
Just talking about the, okay. Okay, so, when you were talking about up here, the P-mix, is the, conceptually, is the future plan to be apartments?
We believe, so, we don't really know. So, that's the idea is, I think you guys have seen, we have seen a number of iterations of what's going to happen north of us and around us. It's our opinion, there's lots of land available out there for commercial, there's lots of land available for other developments. The M-one-fifty says it needs to be a mixed-use or should be a mixed-use. And so, we put something in there conceptually to have the discussion of why we don't think it should stay CP-two. So, right now, it's zoned CP-two. With CP-two, it's our opinion, if it stays there, the specific uses and non-mixed-use opportunities are not something that we prefer to have as part of the development. We believe that a mixed-use development of some sort, whether it's an over-under with some type of residential above and commercial below, or some standalone commercial buildings with some other residential near it, or maybe eventually it's a continuation of some of that town home development to the north if that persists, we're unsure. And that's kind of why we came forward with this plan of saying P-mix, we show apartments just simply for the fact of we could fit some spots in there, you could see some density with the mixed-use intent, and give some flexibility of an idea of where to head. But I don't know if we have an answer for you to say, here it is, because with the number of things we've seen to the north, with the amount of seven and a half acres that Kobe Creek has commercially available still, it seems like there's already an opportunity for things to develop, and we kind of see where it goes before we come up with a plan for that one.
Okay. Um, let's see. Okay, so, so let me ask you this question, because eventually, we're going to be going, hopefully, to that R one. And where is the road, we talked about this, but where, again, is that road going to come in that is going to take you, it's going to come in through the red zone and take you back into the R one?
This east-west road?
Yeah.
So, the east-west road, probably this one's your easiest one to see, maybe not, but there was a continuation, so Summit Creek is over here and has a continuation of that road that gets you out to the west, to the outer road. So, if you've been on that outer road, that road goes south down to Saddle Brook, goes north up to intersection, so Lamar's Donuts, I think there's a church over there. As it continues east, eventually, it would continue east if this developed over to Doc Henry on the east side. So, you'd have a connection between the outer road and Doc Henry east-west. From the south, then, it connects to Sorrel, which is an existing roadway that was stubbed with Belmont Phase One, I think, that will continue and allow an opportunity to get north out of the development, where currently, the development to the south that is, sitting down there, has an east-west road that runs through Saddle Brook, through Belmont, to get you east-west, to get to the outer road or to Doc Henry to get out. This, then, we believe, creates the connection opportunity to create another north-south and another east-west kind of in that area to help aid in transportation.
But probably the most likely way that people are going to come in is off two ninety, is off one fifty.
Oh, yeah, correct. At the beginning stages.
So, they're going to, they're going to be driving through potentially apartments and town homes to get to their, to their single-family R one.
Currently, yes.
Okay. Um, okay, I think that's all I have for you, Matt. And so, then, Hector, I just want to refresh my memory on the P-mix. So, once we zone this, allow the zoning of P-mix in this upper area here, I know they said they don't really know what they're going to put in there right now, but they could, they could, that could be all apartments, right? That could be nothing but apartments. They wouldn't necessarily have to do commercial property in there. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, in the future, well, let's put it this way, if a motion is made to approve the P-mix now, this drawing is essentially kind of a bubble drawing, that's kind of a placeholder to show how that ten acres could develop. It does not grant any specific rights, no entitlements to the developer. So, when those ten acres, when it becomes a little more fully formed as to what could go there, a new application will come before you as part of a preliminary development plan for you to evaluate if whatever use it is that's proposed, be it office, apartment, commercial, is appropriate for the site, and you would have that ability through the public hearing process to decide whether you feel that's the right thing to do.
Right. I get, my point is just, once it's P-mix, it's kind of a free-for-all for anything that can, and in other words, what I'm saying is, this was zoned as CP-two, and now, it's not going to be that anymore. And so, it can't just be commercial, it could be lots of different things.
It could be a number of things dependent on the plan that's approved, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So, I had a question for Mr. Thorne, if you don't mind. So, when Matt brought up the listing all the same, what is, is it the sewage basins or the detention ponds that we have in Lee Summit, just to reference, that we already have some in town? So, off Scruggs, how would you describe, I mean, because you were saying, answering Councilmember Pryor's question about, okay, will it smell, like, what, you said minimal. How would you describe the one off Scruggs?
Not minimal. Uh, Scruggs is the second biggest pump station in the city, at least Summit, it's just upstream of Tudor Road Pump Station, which is adjacent to Prairie Lee Lake down there. Those are large lines and large flows, and we utilize those, those holding basins in order to do maintenance and add on those, on those facilities. So, occasionally, they can be pretty rough.
Okay.
Uh, this would be a lot more like, uh, the, what we call Station Six, which is the excess flow holding basin up off Deer Valley Park, it's in some backyards, it's fenced in. It gets used in extreme rain events to protect the downstream systems. We have a pump station at Legacy Woods that is directly behind some homes there, it's got an excess flow holding basin on it. It gets used very rarely, but it's there to protect the pump station and to tend to soak up the rain-induced flows. This is more of that nature than it would be of those natures of Tudor Road or Scruggs Pump Station.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure there was a difference, because we drive by there, and it is awful.
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure that wasn't what was going in there, just clarify. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember? Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Mr. Thorne, too. Have we explored any other areas for the sewage basin, whatever it's called?
Excess flow holding basin is how we term them. We looked at jumping the property line into the, what's it called, Summit Crossing? Summit Creek? Summit Creek, same line, other, basically just other side of the property line. That would potentially be workable, but they weren't, we weren't talking to them at the time, these guys happened to be in, and it just seemed to align. If we go much upstream, then we don't catch the drainage area, because we want to hold it before it gets into the pipes there in Saddle Brook. And then, it, how it's being done with, being done with gravity in and gravity out means we don't have to have pumps in there, we don't have to have mechanical means of that nature, and it's a much easier to operate and safer to operate system. Mechanical things tend to fail. So, we found this to be the best value, if you will, because it's, operationally, it's the simplest. Cost-wise, we don't have a great deal of excavation or anything, we don't have to get really deep with everything here to do this. It's a fairly compact site that way. So, that's how it was chosen.
Okay. Um, there's something like this, does it typically affect property values that you know of? Is it something?
I'm not an expert in that at all, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. We've got them in, like I said, some pretty high-end neighborhoods.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Rader, I'm going to go to Councilmember Shields and then come back to you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So, there are a couple of things I just wanted to make sure I was clear on. So, first of all, on the excess flow holding basin, the idea is, did I get it right?
You got it.
Okay. No matter what develops in here, whether it's commercial, residential, multifamily, single-family, you need something there. You're hitting the capacity point, and you've got to put this in no matter what.
Yeah, there's, there's no way to solve the line downstream, it's under the lake. We can't dig it up.
And then?
And we don't own it. It's Little Blues.
Okay.
Uh, so, there's that. As far as the sizing for it, the most aggressive use that we find with flows and that kind of stuff is actually that of residential, because commercial uses less lines. What we're dealing with is the more lines you put in the ground, the more likely they are to get inflowing infiltration. So, residential uses create the highest inflowing infiltration for us.
But regardless, even if this was all commercial, which might not make sense there?
No matter what it is, it doesn't really change anything on this, no. This area doesn't, just doesn't have capacity.
Okay. And then, you said that the land was being donated, has the city already acquired that land to put the basin?
We have not.
Okay. That'll be part of this?
It would be part of the plating and that kind of stuff.
Okay. Um, so, if we approve what's in the red tonight, when do you, when do you end up getting that? Like, is it not until they start plating out the single-family?
Uh, probably not too far after that, because we'll want to be looking at doing construction this summer.
Okay. Is that something we need to make a condition of this approval, that that is donated?
Well, I, and.
Okay. Is that something we need to make a, a condition of this approval, that, that is donated prior to those plats being done?
Part of the, we can't get approved in, in that area, nothing can get approved until this gets authorized to go, so I, it benefits.
The, the red stuff can't get approved either?
So, so when we, so when we talk, and I think just to make sure you're, you're hearing it, is it's not our site alone. It's anything in that watershed that would contribute to that sanitary sewer line.
I, I guess, I, I'm just really, really just trying to understand from my own clarity. So like, if you approve the stuff in red, you start working on that, can you not get a, can you not break ground on that until you have this flow holding basin in place?
Our intention would be to do a parallel project, probably. Would allow them, they're going to do some grading, they're going to do a bunch of stuff. We'll be doing a similar thing. By the time they're online, we'd be online. And they got to have the sanitary sewers get there.
If the, if the yellow part, the single-family, if that doesn't develop for five years, that's not going to delay you in getting this going, right?
No.
Okay. But that's all I was trying to understand. And then when we're looking at this, okay, so the part in yellow, that's already zoned R1. We don't have to do anything on that, because they're going to build it in conformance with the current zoning code. It'll just get platted later, right? Okay.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then the red is mostly what we're talking about tonight, that's going to be the quadplexes? And that's what we're approving the, we're, they're asking to approve the PDP for that?
Right, so it'll, it'll be the, the PDP for the red, rezoning PDP for the red and rezoning conceptual plan for the purple.
Right. Okay, so it'd be the rezoning and PDP for the red, so they could continue being forward with the city process with that going towards a final development plan. But the purple, if we approve the rezoning, because it's P-mix, that requires a whole nother plan that would come back and council would need to approve whatever goes in there, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just a whole lot of moving parts. I just want to make sure I had it all straight. Okay. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things I forgot to ask. Um, first of all, who, who will ultimately, and maybe you know the answer to this, Matt, who is ultimately will own this, own these, the, the townhomes? Will the developer continue to own those or will he sell those off?
Correct. Ward Development will own and manage those townhomes. That's one of their, um, financial interest in what they do development-wise, is they develop and hold rentals on that side of it.
And then the other question is, what kind of a guarantee do we have, uh, that this is going to be single-family? I mean, I know that they're saying that you come back before us and all that kind of stuff, but, I mean, it's just like, is there a way to make it so that we can, this one piece, we have a guarantee that, that in the future this will? Because it seems to me that, I, when I remember going back and, and the, the discussions, when they first, when this developer first came through the, um, with their project and a lot of the people there in the area didn't want it to be, it was, I think it was all rental properties there. And they didn't, uh, want that. And so they came back with this and I, I think that was to kind of placate the, the, the residents that, okay, we're going to build some single-family in here, you know, owned properties in here as well. And so, I mean...
So the, the area in yellow is currently zoned R1?
One. They would, they would have to come back to get zoning.
If, for some reason, that development didn't occur in that fashion, someone, I would have to stand here again and ask for rezoning. But the intent, and as we've worked through that, you're right, when we started, we had duplexes on that south end and we heard very clearly that the neighbors were not supportive of any part of that. And so as we started looking at it, the R1, um, made sense, as we pushed the R4 townhomes into the middle made sense. So if, for whatever reason, R1 wasn't going to happen, someone would have to stand back in front of you and ask for that approval. But as is now, that plan would move forward by right of R1.
And you don't have any idea of what they're going to build in R1 at this point?
Those?
Uh, the ones you showed us. Okay, those.
Yeah, so we have a mixture, you know, so exactly what, I don't know, you know, as we kind of talked through it, we've made a few of these lots on the south end, a little bit larger, not obviously to the size of Belmont Farm, but the idea being that these lots that back up to green space would be a little larger, then they'd start to, um, transition to the, maybe the more standard 70 by 120s at the north end before we got to the twin villas, our quads.
And then final, um, um, in the red zone, how long, how long is it going to take you to build out the red zone?
So the, the plan current is essentially to split the property in half, so that the east half would develop first, so we could create a connection between Sorrel and the Signal. So you'd have half essentially of the quads and half of the single-family. And then we would flip over and develop the westerly side. Now, there may be some pieces in it, but, you know, full development, I think we've talked about short side, five, four, five years, high side pushing 10, whatever years it goes to that side of. When you start putting in the single-family for sale, you know, there's a number of units in there that if you sold absorption rates and took the standards, whatever it'd be, quickly it would be five years and past that, it's probably pushing.
You're including your, your single-family in the five years or just the red zone?
The, being both. So both would be built, this, basically it's simultaneous. So these ward would start to develop and build those on a continuous cycle of moving down. These would be built as they sold or as they wanted to build specs on that side of it. So that would just depend on market-driven on the south end.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. I believe this is my last question, but I just wanted to make sure, are you going to be involved with this project? Uh, like, for the foreseeable future and past? I, I feel more comfortable with this project if you will be involved in this project.
I, I am hopeful to be with this project from beginning to end, like we do on all of our development projects. So, um, you know, the developer has, has yet told me I'm no longer, but I think we're okay on that one to say that we will. But yes, I, I believe we're on it, um, from the beginning to end. And then like I say, our company does a lot of home layouts and pieces of it, so were they available? And like, we've told all the neighbors that they still have my card, even if something happens, they can call and we can talk about whatever, so.
Okay.
No problem on that.
Yes. Um, okay, that makes me feel more comfortable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Slish, on that two-lane, I'm, I'm not seeing any of the comments, so I've got a couple of questions. On the, on 150, what were you saying about the, the two lanes that abruptly end? Can you show me? Because you didn't really have any diagrams on here.
Yeah, I don't know if I have anything that's zoomed in enough to see it, but if, if you've been out that way, currently what happens is at the interchange, um, 150 Highway goes two lanes, one, both ways.
Yeah, you got to know, you got to know what's coming to get over.
At Sonic, it abruptly just ends.
Right.
And so on the eastbound leg, we are going to create a transition that takes it, which you would see standard like on a roadway design, where it finishes that thought. Ooh, Hector's, Hector may save us. But essentially, it's, yeah, it's creating that, um, that transition to go from the two lanes to the single lane on 150 Highway to create the improved situation. Yeah, just under, you can see it. But you can start to see, I mean, right now, essentially that's kind of what happens, is it just kind of abruptly ends. There'll be a transition built in this area to smooth out that curve, so that you can actually drive down the eastbound lane and then merge into the single lane on that. Cease there. Eastbound, then you'll also have a turn lane coming into the property at the Signal. And then the Signal will have all of the normal turn lanes for the eastbound, westbound lefts and rights.
Sorry, give me one second. Or go back to your presentation, so I can see the, where the stoplights are and stuff. There we go. Thank you, sir. Yep, yep, yep. Okay. So there, that, when you were showing that, there's going to be a, you talked about the transition and then at the stoplight there, there's going to be a, you're going to put it in a right-hand turn lane?
Yeah, so there'll be a right-hand east. Kobe Creek's has their development that will go up that way.
Yep.
And so there, so this is that same signal location on their side, where they'll have that continuation of that roadway onto their site. So the development of that road will be a westbound right for them, westbound left, and westbound, or eastbound left and right at that location as well.
Okay. Very good. Um, on the, I guess the site plan itself, I just want to, later on, I'll refer to those, to those. I think Hector called them parking pods? Is that what you called it? You did. You coined a phrase that I, I'm going to steal.
Trademark is on.
Um, because Mr. Slish knows I, especially for that. The townhome area, yeah. So you just, those you just incorporated from the planning commission?
Yes, I, and I am, I'm actually, yes, I know you like the parking spaces and I was surprised.
I'm not supposed to say I like or dislike anything during the public hearing.
But I'm aware of, I've heard it many times, that those parking spaces are something you desire to have on these apartment, or these townhome units. And when I went to planning commission, they said it. I said, you're absolutely right and we'll fix that, so.
Wow. We've come a long way, Mr. Slish.
For sure.
And then also the two-car garages were implemented?
Yeah.
Was the rationale behind that was to also help with parking and also diversity of product?
Yeah, so I think the planning commission was concerned with a single-car garage, the number of units that would be there and what would happen. And so the idea was, is that what if we mixed it?
Yeah, you can park more cars.
Yeah, and the developer went back and found that there could be another product opportunity that they could have it. So, yeah, they were happy to do it.
Yep, yep. Okay, I'll go to Mr. Thorne now. So I've also worked with you a long time. I'm on that Little Blue Valley Sewer District Board, so I have to learn all about this stuff over the years and you've had to educate me a few times. So when you say, um, like, I can go back quite a few years now and remember talking about you talking about going in the back of people's homes in Saddle Brook and having to fix problems, is this going to help with that?
Yes. What this does is mean we don't have to go in there.
Because that, that stuff used to scare me to death.
Yeah, uh, and that was tied to the, the property adjacent. When they were proposing that, it was, there was going to be lines that were going to upsize. But the bottom line is, you can't upsize them, because they go to a line that's the same size.
Well, you'd have to dig up everybody's backyard.
And you would, but you can't solve the problem downstream, which is under a lake.
Okay. Ah.
Ah.
So this is, okay, so this is the solution?
It does alleviate going in people's backyards.
Yeah.
But the, what, what, what really kicked it for us was, they were out, uh, doing the metering project for Middle Big Creek and we had provided them RGIS and they said, you know, that line's not that size. And we went, what do you mean? And so that changed how we looked at this area.
Okay. You filled some big shoes tonight. Good job.
Brian?
Yeah. All right, um. All right, this is, move on to the next step of this public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Please come forward.
Kevin Rehak, 204 Southeast Hackamore. First, I'd like to thank Matt and Brian, I mean, over the meetings, I mean, they, uh, they dealt with a lot with all of us and they changed their plan drastically, so we, we were happy that they listened to us and that, you know, the developer, they changed things. So we're really happy to where it's at. And then going to the, um, the planning commission and adding the, adding more parking, I thought the planning commission, I was blown away with how they, I think we took an hour there, um, of questions back and forth. The planning commission blew me away, but still, I'm back to this basin where I don't want sewage behind our house. I'm one that's affected. I'm, uh, the second one over on the map. Um, so we're very concerned about this, whether it's, excuse me, smells, leaks, I don't know, mosquitoes, overfill, health concerns, particles leaving the basin, uh, on windy conditions, all those things bother us. I am a licensed agent, too, a real estate agent. I do think this will deter people. I think there's no way around that. So I do think we see, um, I don't know, we see potential loss of value. I do think there's some of that, but we also, it was just, some people are just going to say no and walk away. So I do think we're impacted. In the end, I think the subdivision drastically changed a lot, not, I don't know, development, I guess. And we're happy to see that, but we're very concerned about with this basin and what it brings to, uh, our neighborhood, our family. Um, I have a pool right there, so I'm concerned about, I don't know, what could be flying around, any health concerns, but, uh, other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Did you, did you teach my kids gymnastics when they were young?
I probably did. So I own Extreme Gymnastics, too.
Wow. Do you age? Holy cow. That was a long time ago, man. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You were a great, great teacher, by the way. Um, okay, anybody else like to come forward and speak for or against the application? All right. Any additional questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Pryor?
So you mentioned one other spot that you did look at for the, the, you want to say the name? Yes. So was it, would it be in anyone's yard? Would it affect, uh, the other location, was it in anyone's yard? Or not in anyone's yard, but it, did it back up to other houses?
Uh, the other potential site would be perhaps on the other side to work with the development of that side of the, of the creek. We haven't topo'd it. I don't know if the elevations all work. Uh, we have done some topo here and a little geotech work to make sure that, uh, the soils are good for it and all that kind of stuff. But that would be the, it'd be either or the side of that. It doesn't move very far.
Um, are there houses around right there?
There are, but their backyards are further away. You can see if you can pull it up for me? Thank you.
And then just to address, um, concerns of the speaker, did, does it increase mosquitoes? And is there any risk to his pool?
Uh, once again, we don't leave them full of standing water.
Do they stay wet?
Not usually, no. Uh, we'll make sure that it, uh, that if, if rainwater would fall in it naturally, that it has a way to be drained out. We don't want the, we don't want the rainwater to go into the sanitary sewer because of it either. So the idea is to keep them dry. Uh, and, uh, as far as wind and, and that, it's, it's in the ground. It's sitting down. And we don't fill it to the top, all right?
Okay, so there'll never be a time where it's like, okay.
So it's not a, a thing like that, so generally speaking, no. So, uh, the other potential site, and like I said, I don't know if it'll work or not, there's some flood plan and everything else in here, would be over on the, that corner. So it's just the other side of the property line. And there are lots there, but they're longer lots, I guess.
Okay. And what would it take? What would it take to get it? I mean, what would it take for you guys to actually, do you know who? So I'm assuming the developer doesn't own that land right there?
This developer does not own that land.
Yeah. What does it take? What kind of time goes into? So I remember it during Public Works, when you mentioned the, under the Lake Winnebago, I didn't put it all together that it was all of this. But, um, what kind of time goes into studying all of this and everything like that to see if that would be a good location?
We've been working on this for about the last eight months. And we started with a, a study and some topo and that kind of stuff, because we just, we had, what it was for us was it started with, all right, here's maybe three options and what, what do these look like? And our staff did that. And then as we, we got to a, a level of satisfaction on that, we said, okay, will it really work? And that's when we engaged a consultant and had them do a study on it. And this site would work elevation-wise and, and that. Uh, so then we have, have, have pulled it together to about a, a 60% design right now.
Okay. I just know if it were me, I, that would, that would scare me, too. Um, okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right, thank you. One second. Yep. Oh, I know what it was. So just because... Oh, I know what it was. So just because the issue came up, Mr. Thorne, I don't think, have you had to lime one of these things in a while?
It's been a while. It's been a while.
So you throw lime down to, you want to explain that, please?
Uh, if we think that, usually if we do it, it's because we put a full-strength waste into a pump station one. And it would be just to, hey, we think this thing has a smell to it. It has some of this kind of stuff.
But this isn't a pump station. So one of these, one of these, have you had to lime one of these in a while?
I don't remember doing any of those in my time with the city.
How, how long's that?
Twelve years.
Okay. Okay, thanks, sir. All right, I'm going to go ahead and take us out of the public hearing. We can start making comments. So hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Rader?
Mayor, it's me again. Okay, I, I just want to make some comments for the record in case in the future I'm dead and gone. I, I'm concerned about changing the zoning from CP2 to PMIX. And the reason is because I guess I think when we have, we have road frontage highways, that they're commercial. And it's so, that use would be commercial. And then I just don't want to see in the future lots of apartments aligning our, our highways. That's the, the first thing. The second thing is, it sounds like the residents are on board with this project. And the second thing would be, that I would be concerned about is the fact that you have, from a, this is from a real estate kind of perspective with, when we're selling homes, a lot of times people don't want to buy homes that have apartments in the front or townhomes in the front, rental properties in the front when going into single-family, because they are going to drive through there. But I wonder if, this is just a comment for the future, when we get ready to do on the, on the R1, that there might be a consideration for a deed restriction to avoid having this be nothing but rentals in the future. And especially if they're affordable-type homes, they encourage investors to buy. And since there's already rental in the front, then, you know, rental in the back as well. And we want to make sure that our, the people that want to come to Leesummit have a place that they can buy a home. So that was just a comment, and I'm putting it out there for the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to commend the development team for the amount of outreach they've done with the neighboring property owners. I think it, it's clear that a lot of effort was put in to try to make sure that this would work in the area. I do like the transition from mixed-use to quadplex to single-family. I think that's a good transition then down south. I'm curious to see what'll go in the PMIX, but that'll have to come back to us again to discuss when they decide what's going to go there. So we'll have a chance to look at it again. So I would be supportive of this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you. I also wanted to thank you guys for being so receptive to, to the people that live in Belmont Farms and all around there. My family had, they lived on Z Highway for a long time, so I was pretty familiar with the developer going into this. And I will say, it makes me a lot more comfortable knowing that you are involved in the project. So thank you for listening and for helping. I also, I guess, yeah, so just thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Mr. Schlist, I like the, I like the parking pods. I really do. And I'm going to take note of that for these future applications. So appreciate the developer conceding that after the planning commission. And then the two-car garage, that's, I mean, that will help with parking. So my thing on these, on these townhome developments is, is that people do want to be in Leesummit. They, they do move into these townhomes and they bring families. And then sometimes those kids grow up and have cars and the streets fill up. And so one side, the street, is only allowed parking. That's a great thing. Two-car garages to help with the, the abundance of cars. And then these parking pods are really good. And then you also added some amenity spaces from the planning commission. So kudos to the planning commission and you guys for working that out, especially the additional, I mean, you've got some additional common area there. So I like those. And then I, I understand the concern on the PMIX, but I won't be here in a year and some, and I trust future councils to make those decisions. And I, you know, so that's why I'm comfortable with it, because I have to let them, I love to let them make, you know, trust, trust in the council, trust in the planning commission like they did on this one. So they, they did a bunch of work on this one, both the planning commission, the staff, and the developers. So I'm supportive of this. If you can go from 50 residents being upset, or at least showing up to meetings not necessarily upset, and whittle it down like that over time, that's, that's what we want to see. We want to see our citizens listen to. So thank you for that. And so I will move forward. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you. I will echo what everybody else is saying too. I commend the developer and Matt for you reaching out to the neighbors. I don't, I feel like we don't get a lot of developers coming in, being so willing to be flexible with their plans. And I think that does speak volumes. And actually, I commend the neighbors who, who voiced their opinions because honestly, they kind of did our work for us. They changed a lot of things that they had you change that I would have wanted. So I appreciate them working with you as well. I guess I, I do support it. I do wish that the excess flow holding basin was on the other property, because I think that does make more sense. I mean, I'm not in all the details, obviously, but I think it just makes more sense to not be right on top of somebody's property, whereas you have more property on the other side. But, so I would love for that to happen, but otherwise, I do appreciate all the work that went into this.
Thank you. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you. If we were to, can we, if we approve this, is that excess flow holding basin, is it in concrete? That's where it's going? Or is this something we can discuss at, like, Public Works to potentially look at the other site?
That's a Mr. Dunning question.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark Dunning, City Manager. If memory serves me correctly, the preliminary development plan for across the site is already, is already completed, right? So they have, that's, Mr. Schlist was mentioning Summit, what was it, Summit Creek. So that development plan's already come through. If we were to receive direction from the council to look at other sites, now we're, we're going to need to go work with a different property owner and negotiate. So that's kind of the lay of land in this space. And, you know, just looking at this area, flow-holding basins need to go in certain areas, as you heard from Mr. Thorne. You have to have the sewer line there. Conditions have to be right for it in a certain location. So we're, we're pretty limited in our options after we learned of this, this line size issue.
Okay, yeah, I didn't realize that the other area, that the other, the area wasn't available anymore. So, okay, thank you.
The question is, when was Summit Creek approved? Just, just for our knowledge. And I think it was probably six or seven years ago. Six. And then the question also asked me was, does that plan stay in place for how long? That, that PDP that's on that, the development plan?
Yeah, we're, we're looking, working on that information.
I think it was within the last seven years. I feel like it was. But I don't know, I should know the answer to the how long it's in place.
Pulling up that plan to see what then was approved. But once approved, that preliminary development plan is, is valid for two years. And it could be extended, but two years by right. I've got it here. It was, the preliminary development plan was approved in 2020, and I believe since then, there was a final plat? A final plat was filed after that. So that locked in, even though it's been more than two years, that application locked in that approval for the PDP.
So that's, that, the approval, when he says locked in, you're meaning it's permanent?
Yes.
Councilmember Shields?
Maybe it's a moot point if, if that other property's already planted, but I just think we've already spent eight months and a lot of staff resources finding a suitable solution. And I don't, I don't.
Okay. Okay. We're out of the public hearing at this point. We're discussing and commenting, and it's time to vote. Oh. Councilmember Prior, would you please read Bill number 25-032?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading. Bill number 25-03, 25-032, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District RP3, Planned Residential Mixed Use, and CP2, Planned Commer, Planned Community Commercial, to District RP4, Planned Residential Apartment, and PMIX, Planned PMIX Use, Preliminary Development Plan and Conceptual Development Plan for Ovation on Approximately 37.24 Acres of Land Located at 325 Southeast M150 Highway, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Leesummit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-032 by Councilmember Prior, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Oh, no, I'm missing one. Somebody need a vote? How many of us are there here? Seven. I keep getting my numbers confused. Councilmember Carlisle's gone, so I keep getting confused. All votes are in. Please record the vote. And it is approved unanimously. So thank you for investing in Leesummit again, to the developer, and for working with our, with our citizens and our, and our staff and our commission. So council, next is the presentation for the candidate, yeah, oh, public comments. Yes, public comments.
I've not received any requests for public comments.
Well, we'll say hi to the Boy Scouts. I, I should make you come up here and, and tell us all about yourselves, but I won't do that. No. The Boy Scout shook his head, no. So, very good. Hopefully, you're learning a lot about roads and sewers and, and things of that nature. So, so council, would you like to take a break before we have that discussion and then come back? Yeah, let's take a short recess.
Welcome to the Leesummit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in, and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our, you know, our fluorescent yellow, green, whatever. And basically, what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the, the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here, and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there, and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There's standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically, what we have on the computer there is, it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T's back here.
EverG, Google. So we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought coresponders onto the scene, licensed, qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring, so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The coresponders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, "982, send route."
Officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown. And then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? Can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, "Oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better."
Our main goal as coresponders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Leesummit, please, can we help you?
My husband has.
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of coresponders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the coresponder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, "Hey, I want a coresponder to respond to this, this crisis," and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health. And I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's, that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, and getting to know, who comes around and sees you? Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
When the person called on the phone, she said that, uh, that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there, and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. And they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner, I'm the manager of Lee Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You got some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. Lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back, and this is where we do all the walking of dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off to the side over there, so we can let them run loose. They can run together, and then we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our, our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our Sally Port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks, and we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell us how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So, this actually has traps in it, but we do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those. And people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really? You're surprised you can't have an alligator in your house? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals, and we have very dedicated people back there, and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold, and then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have, you go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them, you spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered, and all their vaccinations up to par, and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything in our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through. And then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go, and we sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home.
Tarzan's got lots of energy. Hazel's got a weird meow. Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats, she'll kind of get her grumpy face going.
And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals, too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home. You know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there, and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently, I was, I was gardening some, some attention, and so we went out there and had to talk to him about that. Do I do this job? Ah, dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm, and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You know, you're just bringing animals in here, taking care of them, and, and find them homes, and, uh, yeah, absolutely animal lover.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks. And today, we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon-cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility.
Welcome back, everyone. We are going to go back on the agenda, we're going to jump in on Agenda Item 7A for the general public. We have a council position opening. District 4, that's the east side of Lee Summit. And it's, we need to fill the, the position for one year, a year and a few months, till April of 26. And if I'm correct, Mr. Dunning, then that position would actually have to run again to, to, or someone would need to run again, and, uh, run in an election that we would, the citizens would vote, and they would fulfill the rest of the term, which would be two years. But we can appoint, as a council, a citizen to serve with us for the next year and a couple of months, till April.
That's correct. It's the mayor and the councils, per the charter, mayor and the council fills the vacancy of an, of an unfilled term. Until that, I shouldn't say it that way, should fill the vacancy until a next municipal election. And you're correct, in this case, that in 2026, District 4, anybody living in District 4 will have that opportunity to vote for a two-year, and then for a four-year as well.
And when somebody, just for general knowledge here, the candidates will actually have to pick the one that they want to run for, the position they want to run for, the two-year or the four-year.
That's correct. They'll need to designate when they file, whether they're seeking that two-year seat or the four.
Right. So, um, we, when we got the, this vacancy, we as a council, I think we assigned this to Rules? Yep. We assigned it to Rules. Rules has had great discussion. Councilmember Shields is, is pretty darn good at creating processes. Boy, do you do that at home, too? That's rough. There's a process. She creates a checklist, and we're in a, in a timeline, and we're following that. She, of course, is working with staff and our fellow council members, but the key is, we've actually moved forward with this fairly, fairly expediently, because we put that process together. We got it to council for discussion. Council approved a process that we would follow, where we would take applications. We took the application, uh, we then, the, after the council meeting, opened up the position online, as well as through our portals and word of mouth and, and such, and held it open for about 10 days.
If memory serves me right, the 29th is when it closed, and I'm trying to remember. It was the meeting after...
15th or 16th it opened.
Couple, yep.
So, um, the 29th of January, so during that timeline, we got two applications for this position. It's always good to have choices, at least that's my opinion, sorry. We've got Donnie Funk and... Back here? And, is it Niana? Niana?
Cravens.
Cravens. So we have two applications in the packet, and what we were going to do is, as council, is tonight, discuss this timeline, this process. We wanted to have this discussion to talk about next week, how we would do next week. We were going to, and Councilmember Shields, I'm going to let you jump in in a second here, but we were going to have like a candidate forum format next week where we asked them questions. We have, I think Rules has, or at least Councilmember Shields has helped create some questions that we can go off of. This would be a good night to change those, if you want to change one or add one or talk about that. Because next Tuesday night, next Tuesday night, is that right, the 11th? We pushed it so that we could get Councilmember Carlisle involved, if she'd like. So, the 11th, she, I think she'll try to zoom in if she can, I think that's what she's, she's trying to do. But we'll have the candidates come in that we want to put on the forum and ask questions, and then we'd actually, would make a decision that night. And we were wondering if we would get 10 applications. We got two, because we thought if we got 10, we don't want to, we don't want to have a forum that goes till 3:00 in the morning. We thought we would narrow it based on their applications and, and criteria and qualifications. And then with two, though, I don't, I don't, there's not a lot of narrowing to do. So, with that said, Councilmember Shields, I know that you've been working hard on this. What did I leave out?
I think you hit it pretty well. I think our, our job tonight was to come to a consensus about what candidates to invite next week to be part of that forum, since there are only two, and they both seem to be qualified, involved members of the community. I, I would love to see them both come in. I did submit some questions to you by email. I know part of our process was inviting members of the community and council members to submit questions, so I don't know if any of my colleagues have or still, still want to, but I, I think that would be great. And I think we, we kind of set it up, they have an opening statement, each answer the questions that, that you set based on whatever the council members recommend, and then closing statements, and then we would, I think that we have time for some community input, people to come and have kind of public comments.
Yes. We will have that opportunity for people to, we're going to run it like a public hearing, but it's not a public hearing. We're just going to insert a comment area where people can, can chime in as to who they may want to support. And for our clerk, I'd just say, we're also going to have a public comment area, so we're not going to, we're not going to do it all in one. We're going to have a public comment where you talk about anything and everything that you want to talk about operations, about the city, other than the candidate forum that we're having, and then we'll have the comment section during the, just like we do public hearings. Okay.
I, I think you hit everything, so I, and I feel like unless anybody objects to hearing from both candidates, that it makes sense to invite them both to come next week?
Yes. Is everyone okay with interviewing both the candidates?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So if you thought you were going to get questions, Mr. Candidate, not tonight. We'll save them for next week. Yep. Mr. Dunning?
Yes, one question on the process, Mayor. I know encouraging, just as Councilmember Shields suggested, any questions, we, we talked about submitting, submitting those to you, Mayor, and, and working through those. With regard to the packet, though, question of whether or not those, those questions go in the packet, or those will just be questions for that evening?
Well, I think, I think if we're doing an interview with a applicant, you know, with someone, you don't give them those questions upfront. I think...
I would agree. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. I think if we wanted to give them questions upfront, we could say, hey, here's some questions upfront for you to fill out, for us to choose whether or not you're an applicant, or one of our interviewees. Yeah, which we did.
Yep.
So I think now's the time to, you know, let them think on their feet.
Yep. I agree. Just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Rader?
Thanks, Mayor. So, we submit the questions to the mayor, and then will we, will we just take turns? Or will you be asking the questions?
No, no, I don't want to ask all the questions. I would rather, if you don't mind, I'll send them to you right for the meeting, before the meeting, and have you assign them. I'll sign them.
Just come up, or should, I mean, how many questions will we be allowed to ask? I mean, we don't want to go till 3:00 in the morning.
No, we'll, we'll have a set number of questions, but I want everybody to feel free to ask a follow-up or ask somebody to clarify, or, yeah. If, if someone, you know, hijacks the meeting, I'll take it back over, but I trust you all to ask good follow-up questions if you want on your own. Yep?
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez, or Mayor Pretend Lopez?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just along the same line of question and thought, we did say that we would keep a similar format to the chambers forums. I think we should stick to that, and the fact that we only have two candidates, you know, should be fairly smooth. We have the questions outlined upfront, and we stick to that format.
Yeah, I think so, but I, I just mean if somebody wants, like, when someone, I just, we've been doing an interview process in another area, and if somebody says something and you want them to clarify, just like tonight when Mr. Thorne was speaking to us, I'm like, hey, you said this, you know, just clarify for me. I mean, maybe, maybe something like that. I don't think we should probably create, unless, I think we should follow the, the questions, but I do want you to feel comfortable asking an applicant to clarify where they stand on something if they make a statement about it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Now that works.
That make sense? Okay.
And we'll, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Shields.
We'll, we'll ask the same questions to each candidate and just kind of flip back and forth with who answers first.
Yes. That's why, that's why it needs to be, that's why the, you need to be consistent with questions, is to be asking the same questions, but I'll, I'll tell you what, yeah, the sooner you can get them submitted to me, like, let's treat it like we would a council meeting. Like, we have to, staff has to have everything uploaded by Thursday night for us, so let's try to get your questions done in the next 48 hours to me, so I can shoot them back to you and say, hey, here are the questions, and here's who's going to read which ones. Mayor Pretend Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, Councilmember Shields, did you send sample, sample questions to the mayor or to all of us?
I sent some questions to the mayor to, to choose from, and I thought that was kind of what we had agreed to, is that everybody would submit questions, and then he could kind of call through them and say, okay, we've got three questions about incentives, I'm going to consolidate these into one, or I've got, just to make sure we hit the major focus areas.
Okay. You know what? I'll, I'll go through them and read them, and if there's one I want to take out, I'll take it out. Otherwise, I'll just forward them to you.
Sure, that's fine.
And then you guys can add to them, and then we'll narrow it from there. How many were there? I don't even remember, I'm sorry. Okay.
But again, I just wanted to give you some options to kind of pick from, so you don't need to, to use all of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Dunning, I might need reminder Thursday afternoon to get all this out the door.
Yep, I'll help you with that.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. So, what else? Mr. Dunning? Is that it?
Yeah, I think that's it. I've got the, the agreed-upon process here, and you've, I think, hit all those points.
Okay. Mr. Head, what about you? You good with all this? Okay. Cool. Want to move on to the next topic? Eight? Yeah. Okay. All right. I believe we're on those ordinances forwarded from committee. Keep in mind that we did move number C over to first readings, so. So we'll start with Councilmember Lovell, please. Would you please read bill number 25-033?
Yeah. I move to advance second reading. Bill number 25-033, an ordinance approving the purchase of site furniture for the Green Street project in the amount of $100,142 from forms and services and authorized the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading. Bill number 25-033 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Go to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption. Bill number 25-033, an ordinance approving the purchase of site furniture for the Green Street project in the amount of $100,142 from forms and services and authorized the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 25-033 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does, it is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 25-034?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, Bill number 25-034, in ordinance approving the award of bid number 2025-026 for the processing and mailing of utility bills to lineage connect for initial term of one year with up to four one-year renewals, and authorizing the city manager to entreat an agreement for the same buy-in on behalf of the city of Leesum, Missouri.
Thank you. We have motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-034 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted, it's second, goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I now move for adoption of Bill number 25-034, in ordinance approving the award of bid number 2025-026 for the processing and mailing of utility bills to lineage connect for an initial term of one year with up to four one-year renewals, and authorizing the city manager to entreat an agreement for the same buy-in on behalf of the city of Leesum, Missouri.
Thank you. We have motion to adopt Bill number 25-034 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Mayor Protem Lopez, would you please read Bill number 25-036?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I move to advance Bill number 25-036, in ordinance approving the amendment number six to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, 9940, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-036 by Mayor Protem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does go to second reading. Mayor Protem Lopez, would you please?
Yes, I now move for adoption of Bill number 25-0, uh, 25-036, in ordinance approving the amendment number six to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as adopted by ordinance 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-036 by Mayor Protem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read Bill number 25-037?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, Bill number 25-037, in ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Leesum, Missouri, and LifeScan Wellness Centers for comprehensive hands-on physicals for all public safety employees, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-037 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does go to second reading. Councilmember Pryor, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill number 25-037, in ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Leesum, Missouri, and LifeScan Wellness Centers for comprehensive hands-on physicals for all public safety employees, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-037 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does get adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Rader, would you please read Bill number 25-038?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, Bill number 25-038, in ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Leesum, Missouri, and the DIGI Security Systems for 1840W custom solar-powered surveillance trailers, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-038 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does move to second reading. Councilmember Rader, would you please?
Thanks, Mayor. I moved for adoption, Bill number 25-038, in ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Leesum, Missouri, and the DIGI Security Systems for 1840W custom solar-powered surveillance trailers, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-038 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by anyone? Thank you. Councilmember Shields? Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 25-039?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, Bill number 25-039, in ordinance approving the award of an agreement for the lease of City Fiber Optics strands between the city of Leesum and Leesum R7 School District, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-039 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. And I move for adoption of Bill number 25-039, in ordinance approving the award of an agreement for the lease of City Fiber Optics strands between the city of Leesum and Leesum R7 School District, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-039 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read Bill number 25-040?
I move to advance second reading, Bill number 25-040, in ordinance authorizing execution of a Workday order agreement to purchase additional training credits for the ERP implementation and support in accordance with contract number 2025-005-1 between the city of Leesum and Workday, and authorizing the city manager or information technology director to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-040 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, ordinance authorizes execution of a Workday order agreement to purchase additional training credits for their ERP implementation and support in accordance with contract number 2025-005-1 between the city of Leesum and Workday Incorporated, and authorizing the city manager or information technology director to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-040 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill number 25-041?
Yes. I move to second reading, Bill number 25-041, in ordinance authorizing the spending of additional compensation under the professional services agreement between the city of Leesum and Cindy Gray, the contractor, for the implementation of Workday.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-041 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does go to second reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of Bill number 25-041, in ordinance authorizing the spending of additional compensation under the professional services agreement between the city of Leesum and Cindy Gray, the contractor for the implementation of Workday.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-041 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Mayor Protem Lopez, would you please read Bill number 25-042?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I think the Finance Committee was pretty busy last night.
Very busy.
So, we'll get through it. We did last night. I move for second reading, Bill number 25-042, in ordinance authorizing the approval of change order number one to the AVAP statement of work that is subject to the professional service agreement between AVAP USA LLC and the city of Leesum, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-042 by Mayor Protem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does move to second reading. Mayor Protem Lopez, would you please?
Yes, I now move for adoption of Bill number 25-042, in ordinance authorizing the approval of the change order number one to the AVAP statement of work that is budget to the professional services agreement between AVAP USA LLC and the city of Leesum, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-042 by Mayor Protem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Rader, would you please read Bill number 25-043?
Thank you, Mayor. And as a alternate to the meeting last night, I happily learned about what all these bills were. So, I. I move to second reading, Bill number 25-043, in ordinance amending Article V, Boards, Commissions, and Committee Division, number one, generally by enacting a new section, due-266 broadcast of meeting, to provide for the recording and/or broadcast of certain council, committee, board, and commission meetings.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-043 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Yes, tell us about this, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. So this one was on the agenda at Rules for a while. We had several discussions about what all the boards and commissions in Leesum for the city are, what was reasonable and practical to try to broadcast, and come to some consensus. I don't know if Mr. Head wants to speak to any of this, but I believe we kept some things the same, that all council meetings, committee meetings, Planning Commission, TIF Commission, those would all be broadcast. And then for most of the other ones, we went with a standard of, you know, where reasonably practical, we would broadcast or record and make the recordings available. So we didn't want to tie the hands too much of some of these committees that do things like sometimes site visits, so that if they're on a, basically, a field trip and they don't have a good way to broadcast their meetings, record them, that we wouldn't hold that against them, but we would try to make reasonable efforts for all of those commissions and boards to make their meetings public. So, Mr. Head, did I kind of capture the spirit of what we did a couple of months ago?
I believe so. The other thing that we did to this that I think is significant is we sort of updated the terminology. Previously, we talked about broadcast. We didn't really talk about streaming and online platforms and those sorts of things. And we did update it to, to make sure that we were broader than just sort of the cable channel, which is what we were using at the time. I think in 2021, when we were doing this, streaming wasn't so much of an issue, but it is probably our primary way that people see meetings that the city does now. So we've updated that as well. But, but other than that, I would say Councilmember Shields summarized it perfectly.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll just say, I think it's great. I love the transparency. We should be taking our meetings to the, right to the phones and the laptops of our citizens, so. So thank you for the hard work on that and bringing it forward. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does move forward to second reading. Councilmember Rader, would you please?
Thanks, Mayor. I move for adoption, Bill number 25-043, in ordinance amending Article V, Boards, Commissions and Committees, Division One, generally by enacting a new section, 2-266, broadcast of meeting, to provide for the recording and/or broadcast of certain council, committee, board, and commission meetings.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-043 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? I forgot to say enter their TVs. You can, you can get it on, you're, YouTube it on TV. What other, I don't want to miss anybody. We want to get it out there. Let's just put it that way, so, all right. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. I did that so I could avoid getting like a phone call from like Phyllis Edson or somebody that, from the past, that was like, you know, needs to be on my TV. All right. We're on to, that did adopt, get adopted unanimously, sorry. We are on proposed ordinances first reading, and. Let's, do you have a certain order, Ms. Fowler O'Carroll? Do you have, want me to read them in a certain order? Okay, then let's go with Councilmember Pryor, and then we'll go to the other bill with Councilmember Hodges. The first one is Bill number 25-044. Would you please read to move to second reading?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, Bill number 25-044, in ordinance accepting final platent titled Lakewood Business Park, Northeast McGuire Boulevard, as a subdivision to the city of Leesum, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-044 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously, thank you. And then we did move this one out of, forwarded from committee to first reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill number 25-035?
Thank you. I move to second reading, Bill number 25-035, in ordinance approving amendment number five to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-035 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion. Yes, Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for any councilmembers who weren't in this meeting, that at this meeting of finance and budget, we had three members of the committee present, and since Mayor Protem Lopez had to recuse on this particular ordinance, since it relates to funding of the courts, we only had two votes on it, so we recommended it for discussion rather than approval, so that's why we're only doing first read tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment? That you're recusing?
Yes, other than I am recusing publicly.
All right. Well, she made the statement for you, but, you know.
She's good. Last night also.
That's hilarious.
Yeah, that's hilarious.
All right. Next, then, we need to discuss, any discussion on these amendments to the budget? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Six oh with one recusal. Thank you. And then we have a substitute bill coming forward here. I think I'll have Councilmember Shields read it, but I'd like to have Mr. Dunning or Mr. Park please come forward to, to tell us what, why it's a substitute bill. Councilmember Shields, would you please read it first?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of substitute bill number 25-021, ordinance determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring for public use certain land right-of-way permanent easements and temporary construction easements for roadway, water, stormwater, utilities, pedestrian amenities, additional infrastructure facilities, other public improvements, and all work incidental and subsidiary thereto associated with the proposed Ward-Rodin-Purcell's Road intersection project, authorizing city manager and his designees to negotiate for the purpose of acquiring the necessary interest in land and authorizing the city attorney and his designees to institute condemnation proceedings if such interest in land cannot be acquired by purchase through good faith negotiations.
Thank you.[1670.28] We have a motion to adopt Bill number, substitute Bill number twenty-five dash zero two-one by Councilmember Shields, and seconded by Councilmember Hodges, that we have Mr. Park here to tell us why the changes.
Yes, good evening. Michael Park, Director of Public Works. So, um, a couple of things. One, we want to point out two findings that are now in the substitute bill, as well as, um, you'll notice there's only one remaining property owner, and that's Jackson County. So, we were able to successfully address all issues with all other property owners, with the exception of Jackson County, which is a little surprising, being another governmental entity, that we couldn't find cooperation and support for a project that clearly improves this public safety for not only the City of Lee Summit and our users through this intersection, but also for their trail users. Uh, we're making improvements to the trail. It's improving the safety for the crossings of their trail users at this intersection. We're not breaking any continuity to the corridor, so we have made a very, uh, concerted effort in our design of the project improvements to ensure that the continuity of the trail use is continued and maintained, not only for the trail use, but the continuity of the entire Rock Island corridor, is assured for future transit use in the way we've designed the relocated Purcell's Road and the grades. Uh, we had given the county plenty of opportunity to review those plans. In fact, we had reached an MOU with the county, thinking, you know, we would have their cooperation throughout this project, in a way that, you know, we've met all of our obligations of that MOU, and here we are, we have seen complete non-response from the county. It's been years in delay, and it's quite unfortunate that that delay may put in jeopardy over one million dollars in federal funds. Um, we thought they would have been a good partner in this, Mayor. We've seen good partnerships in the, uh, uh, previous locations of the Rock Island Trail and where it's crossed other corridors and used our right-of-way, like Longview Road, no further away than maybe a mile. And so, we had no reason to believe we couldn't come to this agreement where we could work with them in partnership to improve both their use of their, their facility, as well as, uh, the benefits that we've had planned now for many years, as this is a publicly voted-on project from the 2017 capital improvement sales tax. And, uh, with that, you know, we've assured that we've met the obligations in the MOU, being the continuity of the corridors, that we've had no disruption to their use, and that we find it a benefit to both the county and to the city.
Didn't we probably work together pretty well on the Hartman Park a few years back?
Uh, yeah, we found good partnerships with them before, not only with Hartman Park and the trailhead that was built for the Rock Island Trail, but as I mentioned, the crossings at, uh, Longview Road, the crossing down at Shear Road, all within narrower right-of-ways that we have got intergovernmental agreements with them, where, you know, they're putting signs in our right-of-way for that trail to be used. Uh, the Chipman Road project that's still under construction, we partnered with them. We gave them a very sizable payment for a bridge to overpass the Chipman Road. We built connections between Chipman Road, the trail, bike facilities up to the Rock Island Trail. Yes, we've had good partnerships in the past, which is kind of why it's a surprise in this case, where there's undeniable benefits to both parties for cooperation, and to not get that this time. It's disappointing.
Yep, it is. Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously, thank you. And that takes us to committee reports. Councilmember Shields?
Well, as you can tell, Finance and Budget did absolutely nothing yesterday. Now, we had a very busy, full meeting, um, but some really good discussion, um, about, uh, budgeting priorities, and especially what to do with our fund balance, our reserve balance. I probably should have mentioned that when that actual bill was on the floor, um, but I did just want to kind of mention that we went through some priorities. Big ones were the Green Street Plaza Project and the ERPs, your Verps, Slurps. Yeah, Equipment Replacement Program, but there's a whole bunch of acronyms that all end in ERP. But basically, that, two things. One is, is that by cash funding, um, about ten million dollars towards the Green Street Project, it saves us about five million dollars in interest and bond issuance fees. Um, so, the committee made that recommendation. And then, looking at the various equipment replacement programs, especially the vehicle replacement programs, that with the vehicles that the city has already, um, committed to purchasing, that we are short funds in those programs. Um, so, we allocated, I think we earmarked another 2.5 million towards that. And, and that thought process for us behind both of those was, these are obligations that the city already has, that we're going to pay for one way or another, and what can we do to be the most responsible with taxpayer money, um, when we do that? So, I just wanted to flag those, because those are a couple of pretty, um, big-ticket items, but we did have really good discussion with the committee and with staff, um, about those, and, and hopefully council is happy with the priorities that, that we brought forward tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the hard work, for the, by the Finance and Budget. Councilmember Rader?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm reporting on the January twenty-second, uh, Parks Board meeting. That was their first meeting of the year, and it was jam-packed with stuff. So, I just, I'll highlight a couple of things. Uh, they had the, they talked about three of the, you know, our, our big, um, community centers, and the Field House, of course, which is coming on. They had a feasibility study. They looked at how we compare with other areas and their proximity. Uh, the demand for indoor space is huge right now for all types of athletics, and the top ones are aerobics, golf, pickleball, who knew, and walking and yoga. So, they will be, uh, working to get those things, those things filled, uh, which will allow them also to have regional tournaments and additional courts, which will allow the parks to expand their programming. They talked about, uh, what's going on with Longview Community Center. Basically, people love it. They think the facility is wonderful, friendly, and safe. And then the Gamber Center, they updated, uh, they updated the indoor ballroom this last year, I guess, which is, uh, giving them an increase in rentals, and the new courtyard, which I think was last fall. But the other really important thing, I think, uh, whenever I go to the, the meetings, is their patron reviews. And so, the Parks Department takes the patron reviews very seriously, and there was a lot of pages of them, and, which is probably kind of hard to go through, because, you know, people don't always say nice things. But for the most part, uh, the Parks Department works very hard to make sure that, um, they are addressing the, the, the concerns of the people that use the, the, uh, different community centers and all things park. And so, I'm really proud of the fact that they work very hard to make sure that they are addressing people, because you know, feedback is the breakfast of champions.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Sorry, Mayor. I, uh, got so into what I was talking about with Finance and Budget that I forgot. I also wanted to report out on Downtown Lee Summit, um, had their, um, monthly board meeting, uh, that I went to as their liaison, and they're continuing to discuss, um, downtown days and what that may look like, uh, next year, trying, they're working to find, um, a carnival vendor that will have more of a kid-friendly, family-friendly atmosphere with maybe some shorter hours, but they're still doing their homework on that, but they have, um, taken to heart trying to make sure that stays a family-friendly atmosphere. And then, um, LSEDC is continuing their, um, president search process, and I know you've been involved with that, so I don't know if you want to say a couple of words about how that's going?
We have a meeting Tuesday. I'll have a better report next week, or, is it Tuesday? When do we have a? So, I should have a good, a better report for you next week, um, because we've been doing interviews, uh, for potential executive directors. And it's gone well. There was lots of applicants and, uh, lots to choose from. Thank you. Okay. Council comments. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Um, who gets to sit in the interviews? Both of you guys get to interview also for the LSEDC?
We have, um, uh, the board member, the board, um, did open it up, the, to the board members, and basically, it was mostly who volunteered or, um, but there's quite a few of us. And then, the final applicant will go to the full board, the final interviews will go to the full board.
Were the applicants like most, like mostly local, or just from everywhere?
No, they were from everywhere.
Really? That's exciting.
Nationwide.
Oh, good. Um, okay, so, I was actually wondering, when we were talking about, you mentioned TV and all like the, all the different ways, but it reminded me of, a long time ago, we had a discussion about like Legals being in, it needed to be in a daily publication, but we also decided to keep paying the Tribune and putting it in the Tribune, but now that the Tribune's not a thing, or maybe it's a thing, but I don't know, I don't think it's a thing anymore. Do we still, are we still paying for that, or how does that work?
I can't speak to the use of the Tribune. I know, uh, for Legals, the, the truly legally required publications, we're using the Pulse, because that's a, that's a legal required. Um, Shannon may have more information.
Uh, yes, Shannon McGuire, Planning Manager. So, we did reach out to the Tribune, um, when, um, when that all went down, and, um, they are no longer having the staffing to, to publish that, so we're no longer publishing it in there, so.
Okay, I didn't know, did we pay upfront, or did?
No, we pub, we paid per.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Staff Roundtable?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have Assistant City Manager Weber come down, and I, I know each of you had some Take Time to Be Kind, uh, information there at your, at your seat. I'd like for her to highlight the Human Relations Commission's efforts, uh, for Take Time to Be Kind Week, and then have a few other items after she enlightens us on that, that event.
Crystal Weber, Assistant City Manager. So, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Human Relations Commission. They're getting ready to kick off Take Time to Be Kind Week, so next week, Monday through Saturday, it's only six days, I know it's not a full week, but, um, you've got some information in front of you. The website is up and live, they have some press releases going out, but this year they're doing a couple of different things that are new. So, this year they're going to focus on all kinds of kindness. So, that includes being kind to yourself, um, being kind to animals, being kind to the planet. So, you'll see lots of messaging coming out that's just not, you know, say hello, compliment a friend, that covers a lot of ways you can be kind. Um, they've got some great partners this year because of that, so they're partnering with Rediscover, Lee Summit Medical Center at R seven, which is brand new, so I'm really excited about that. But what I wanted to give you, I have this little, called a passport, but it's a Beehive Honeycomb, something, I know it gets a little cheesy. This is something that you, your kids, your friends, your neighbors, your coworkers can all participate in. Councilmembers are eligible to win, so I expect to see all of your names on one of these. You just fill it out with all the ways you were kind next week. Drop it by City Hall, there's a little Beehive you can drop it into, and you're eligible for prizes. We're also going to share some of the ways people were kind. Don't worry, it'll just be your first name, so we're not going to put, you know, Hillary Shields Motor Neighbors Lawn, it'll just say Hillary Motor Neighbors Lawn. Um, but I think it's a great thing. They're really excited about this. They hope to continue to grow it every year. Um, they already have about two pages of ideas for next year, so if anyone would volunteer to help next year, give me a call. They have lots more partnerships they want to make ahead. So, you'll be seeing stuff from LS Project Happiness. I'm sure all of you have seen their signs out through the community, so they're partnering this year. Lee Summit Medical Center is going to be doing things for their staff. All three high schools are doing some kindness projects for faculty and staff, because sometimes they get forgotten. And I think it's so great, especially in the high schools and middle schools, because it's also Valentine's Week, which can be a very disenfranchising, um, time for people of that age if they're not happy to be in a relationship or have a close connection, so. Um, also a great opportunity for seniors, we're partnering with some local, um, senior living facilities to have some opportunities. If you're in the area during regular business hours, they also be hosting a gratitude station down here in the lobby, so eight to five, Monday through Friday next week, you can stop by, make a yard sign, make a nice little note. If you forgot to buy your wife a Valentine, we're open till five on Friday, you can come by and make one. Uh, we'll have everything but glitter, so you can put your creativity to use, but we hope to see you all, and, um, please, if you do something, feel free to tag it on your, your personal social media, your council social media. I think it really helps to see you guys kind of leading from those soft places, so we'd really appreciate your support. Any questions?
Very good, thank you.
You have to be kind to Beth, though, too. You can't pick on him.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Okay, a few, uh, road closures and openings to mention, so a little, uh, little opportunities to bust some new roads open, but close some others down. So, Third Street here in front of City Hall, uh, between Douglas and Green is now open, so if you were headed, uh, we've had that closed for some time, but, uh, it's open to Green now, uh, so that has been opened up. Uh, one that is closed is Second, uh, Second Street, uh, between Noel and Market. So, if you're coming in downtown Lee Summit from, from the west, down Second Street or down Third Street, we were pretty disruptive right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I drive that sway come every single day.
Me too, Mayor. And it's just like, oh, it's a good thing we know the backways, right? So, Second Street from Noel to Market, uh, is closed right now. That's closed between, uh, we closed it February third, that will be closed through February ninth. That's for some sanitary sewer work that we needed to do. Let's switch back over now.
Just till February ninth, the Second Street one is?
February ninth, yep. But, once we open that up, here's what's going to happen. We're going to shut down the intersection of Third and Jefferson.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep. Uh, so that closure is necessary to?
You're going to get calls on that one.
To begin the work, uh, for the actual Third Street improvement. So, uh, that intersection will be closed down Monday for, February tenth, and that will likely, well, it will remain, uh, closed until early April.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep. Uh, and this is?
Killing me, I have friends on the, on those corners.
Yep. So, we don't want to shut down Second and Third both at the same time, so as soon as we get Second done, then we're going to switch over to Third Street.
Is there a, is there like a flower allowance or something that I can tap into to send flowers to all these people?
Uh, we might need to invest in something like that, but that, that, that's, that's, that's a pretty impactful project, Third Street, so. And just so you know, Third Street, I mean, that's the kickoff to us doing our, our construction, right? Up to this point, it's been utility, relocations, and things of that nature, so that Third Street project right now is expected to be completed in November of 2025, so that's still, still a ways to go on that, on that, uh, project. Uh, just for awareness, weather-wise, we're in that line of freezing rain, freezing drizzle. It appears to be, most of it's going to be north of us, but just out of an abundance of caution, our crews will be out this evening, uh, doing some pre-treatment, just in, in, in case we do have any, uh, freezing pavement out there due to the precipitation. Last thing I have is, uh, through our public service agreements that we have with our community partners, each one of those entities are to submit a biannual report, per the agreement, to the city manager, uh, on or before January thirty-first. I wanted to report, I have received all those biannual reports, happy to, happy to share those with you. Um, I, I review those, uh, if I have any questions and things of that nature, then I can, uh, seek that information clarification from them. But I know each of those will be before you, uh, in March to give their, uh, annual update in person, but if you'd like to see those in advance, I'd be happy to share those with you as well, so. Uh, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. This is a busy, happening place that we all live in, isn't it? All right, thank you all. Thank you to staff, council. This meeting is adjourned at eight-fifty.